We're recording.
Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries Public Hearing on Proposals to Amend Fixed Fishing Gear Rules to Further Protect Endangered Species. I'm the Agency Director Dan McCarron. I regret that we're not in a large room meeting face to face, but due to this pandemic, we've had a number of meetings in this fashion, so I am confident that we can use this virtual meeting technology to provide the information in a meaningful way to you to allow you to understand the proposals and provide comment back to us, whether it be on the record tonight or in writing. So how about today's virtual meeting? As Jared just mentioned, it will be recorded and it's going to be posted on our YouTube channel. There will be a second version of this meeting held tomorrow, same time at six o'clock. That would be December 9. We've had some success with these kinds of meetings with Zoom and with Jared as moderator, running the meetings of our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. Jared will be the moderator of the meeting and will be assisting me with recognizing you when you want to speak. If you know anyone who's unable to use these technologies sufficiently, please have them reach out to us. We can get them the relevant information. Please go to the next slide. This slide describes the legal authorities for DMF to propose and take these actions and relevant timelines. The comment period will remain open through next Friday, December 18. We anticipate making a final recommendation to the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission at the scheduled January 7th meeting, with some aspects of the proposed rules possibly being implemented for this winter 2021, while some are proposed for 2022. The Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission is a governor's appointed nine-member citizens board that oversees most of DMF's regulations and advises the agency on matters concerning marine fisheries management. Proposed amendments require majority approval of the commission. So under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, and pursuant to the authorities found it, Mass General Law 130, Sections 2, 17, 10, 17A, 8104, DMF is taking public comment and holding these hearings on proposed amendments to regulations at 322 CMR Chapters 6, 7, and 12. These draft regulations are designed to reduce the risk of endangered right whales becoming entangled in fixed fishing gear and reduce the potential harm posed by fixed fishing gear if a right whale interacts with it. As I mentioned before, the comment period will remain open through next Friday. Next slide, please. Regarding this virtual reality that we are in, the virtual rules of engagement, purpose of the hearing is to afford interested parties to submit data, opinions, comments, or arguments on specific amendments being proposed, or to offer how the proposed amendment can be changed to minimize the impact on those affected while still achieving goals. At the conclusion of this presentation, we will first accept clarifying questions regarding the proposals, and then once all the questions are addressed, we will invite the public comment. I recommend you submit comments in writing. All correspondence will be shared in full with the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission in advance of their January 7th business meeting. The hearing will be recorded and questions and comments are part of the record. All members of the public will be muted through this meeting. To participate in the question and comment period at the end of the meeting, the public is required to use the raise hand function. This will create a queue for questions and comments. DMF will recognize individuals when it is their turn to speak, and then they will be unmuted for the duration of their question or comment. We ask commenters to limit their comments to two minutes per person per hearing item, and follow-up comments may be allowed after all persons have had an opportunity to speak. Next slide, please. The written chat function will be enabled and DMF will be answering questions through this function. The chat function will become part of the public record of the hearing. We ask participants to conduct themselves in a professional and courteous manner. Individuals may be permanently muted or removed from the meeting based on their conduct. It's not necessary for you to comment during this virtual hearing to register your concerns. Feel free to use this virtual hearing for informational purposes and then submit well-thought-out written comments later. And at the conclusion of the hearing, this video will be posted to the YouTube channel.
Dan, just so folks know, because I have had a couple of questions in the chat, it is likely that tonight's hearing will be posted on our YouTube channel first thing tomorrow morning and Wednesday's first thing Thursday morning.
Thanks, Jared. All right, next slide, please. This slide was borrowed and modified from one that the National Marine Fisheries Service presented last week at the New England Fisheries Management Council Meeting. You can see that much of the population growth of the last decade has been wiped out by elevated mortalities and reduced calves born each year. The right whale population estimate is approximately 366 animals at the beginning of last year. Right whales have been in decline since 2010, and this coincides with oceanographic regime shift resulting in reduced calves and changing right whale distribution, such as movement up to the Gulf of St. Lawrence in Canada. An unusual mortality event since 2017 has occurred, and there have been 32 mortalities and 14 additional serious injuries likely resulting in death, and that's between the two nations of Canada and the United States. Entanglement and vessel strike continues to be a significant source of serious injury mortality throughout the species range. Where whales are being entangled always generates much debate and controversy because it's unusual to retrieve the entangling gear off the whale to successfully identify the gear back to the region, the fishery, or the person. But clearly, two trends have emerged, and that is whales bear many scars that suggest entanglements continue to occur despite regulation changes. And in recent years, most of the entangling gears that have been found on injured and dying whales have been in heavy rope, well in excess of the diameter of a half inch, that is, and those very thick ropes are not being fished by the inshore fleets. Tonight's proposals attempt to address these issues by reducing the risk of entanglement, reducing the severity of the injury, and help reveal and possibly exonerate the mass state waters fishery through direct or indirect evidence about the source of the rope. Next slide, please. The proposal background, we're responding to two challenges. The Take Reduction Team Initiative, the Take Reduction Team goes back to 1996, and I served on that team when it was first formed, and today Bob Glenn occupies the seat for the Division Marine Fisheries. But it has been working since 1996 to reduce the takes, serious injuries, and mortalities of large whales, specifically endangered whales like northern right whales. And the team was brought together to deal with the unusual mortality event, and they were last convened in the spring of 2019. State-specific proposals were submitted to NIMPs earlier this year, and NIMPs is expected to publish proposed regulations imminently. At the same time, my agency and the Commonwealth is dealing with litigation. In April 2020, there was a citizen suit provision, I'm sorry, citizen suit against DMF and its permitting scheme, as well as Secretary of Environmental Affairs, dealing with this issue of unauthorized takes. And so we are proposing to meet the court's order. The court ordered us in April 2020, we are proposing to to the National Marine Fisheries Service, we are applying for an incidental take permit, and we're going to talk about that in a later slide. But those are the two issues, are the two kind of forces at play here. One is the ongoing Take Reduction Teams initiative to address long-term decline in right whales, and this has been over two years. And then more recently, the judge's order for us to apply for an incidental take permit. This, these proposals only seek to minimize harm to right whales. The incidental take permit that we're going to be pursuing will likely also address the takes of leatherback turtles, but leatherback turtle related rules are not captured necessarily in this, these proposals, but will through future rulemaking. As we deal with the National Marine Fisheries Service in this application, we're going to be devising those, those plans. So next slide, please. The next three slides cover the proposals. In summary, three fixed gear proposal amendments are proposed. We propose to extend the February 1st through April 30th large whale seasonal trap gear closure, which is currently north and east of Cape Cod, to include all waters under the jurisdictional, the Commonwealth, for that same time period. This would include adjusting the conch pot haulout period, which at this time extends through April 14th, but that would have to be moved up to April 30th as well. The second is closing a gill net area that has been left open since the early days of our conservation plan back in the 90s. And I'll be showing a map on that, and that's in an area off of Situate. And then the third part of the fixed gear proposals is to implement a closed season for buoyed recreational lobster and crab trap gear. The closed season is proposed to run from the Tuesday following Columbus Day through the Friday preceding Memorial Day. One comment we've been getting about ropeless fishing, we've had a number of written comments regarding ropeless fishing and recognized that there is a lot of interest in moving the lobster fishery to this technology. And specifically, NIMPs, NOAA, fisheries, the NGOs, and researchers are looking into the functionality of that tool, the cost of the implementation, how to manage specific user conflicts, particularly among trap fishermen and between mobile and fixed gear fishermen when gear cannot be identified at the surface, and enforcement of the trap and trawl features when gear cannot be readily hauled at the surface. While not part of this public hearing, DMF has existing regulatory authority to allow the setting of experimental ropeless fishing gear to investigate these critical questions. So tonight's hearing won't deal with that, but just to sum up, we have been in conversations and we have issued some experimental permits in past seasons to continue to experiment with some of these gears. And in fact, we have received a pretty substantial grant through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to examine the feasibility of ropeless fishing and to help to sort of reveal what the hurdles would be to allow and have the fishery go to a ropeless, a ropeless, you know, full-scale fishery. And so it's, it's an, obviously, it's an ongoing issue, but I just wanted to make that clear for anybody who might be listening in and is seeking for us to move in that direction through these hearings. As far, next slide, please. Slide number eight. As far as the summary of gear modification proposals, we are proposing to require vertical buoy lines break when exposed to 1,700 pounds of tension. This may be accommodated by fishing buoy lines with 1,700 pound breaking strength or by rigging the buoy line with a contrivance or multiple contrivances that'll allow it to break at that pressure. We are also requiring all vertical buoy lines affixed to commercial trap gear have a diameter not greater than three eighths inches, and all vertical buoy lines affixed to recreational lobster and crab trap gear have a diameter not greater than five sixteenths, that would be slightly smaller. And then effective a year from January, prohibit the fishing of single lobster traps onboard vessels with an overall length of 29 feet or greater. These vessels would be required to configure their traps as multiple pot trawls. Vessels with an overall length of less than 29 feet may continue to fish single lobster traps where authorized. Next slide, please. And then the, the final slide on other proposals, we have a cap, a proposed cap on the number of student lobster permits issued at 150, and then the next three numbers, two, three, four, and five are more or less housekeeping or technical corrections. We're rewriting the, the, the purpose of the, of the regulations section so it better reflects current approach to managing protected species. We're consolidating regulations that govern vessel interactions with right whales into one section. We want to establish a consolidated section of maps relevant to protected species regulations, and we're going to consolidate and refine all regulatory language as necessary to improve clarity and readability of existing regulations. As far as capping the number of student permits goes at 150, this would approximate the current level of fishing by student lobster permit holders and prevent any significant growth in this activity. For example, in 2020, we issued 105 permits. Note that student lobster permit holders are allowed to fish up to 25 traps and are subject to a season of June 15th to September 15th, and all the gear has to be removed from the water after September 15th. Next slide, please. Getting back to the, to the issue of the incidental take permit that we are pursuing with the National Marine Fisheries Service, the, in January, the ESA Endangered Species Act suit was filed. The court did come out with an April decision. We have begun the incidental take permit application. This includes extensive discussions and, and data queries and examinations of our fisheries with the National Marine Fisheries Service. And it's a, it is a fairly complicated process. One of the key features is to develop what's called the Habitat Conservation Plan. Any ITP, any incidental take permit that is issued for any, any state agency must demonstrate steps that we would be taking to minimize and mitigate impacts that the activity is having on endangered species. So as I mentioned before, this, this particular set of rules tonight only deals with right whales, and we aren't dealing with the leatherback issue tonight. Next slide, please. The, the commercial trap closure extension, this is a pretty effective map to describe what we're proposing. The pink area in, in and around, that's, that's sort of surrounds Cape Cod, that is the existing three-month closure known to many as the Mass Bay Restricted Area. It is a federal closure. That particular area goes extensively into the federal zone, well beyond the state border, but we're just depicting it there for, for completeness. And we're proposing adding the other area in deep red to the existing three-month closure, which accounts for all of the territorial waters, or waters under the jurisdiction rather, of Massachusetts. It is, while it is true that the most likely location to see right whales is, is the current closure around Cape Cod, we have seen right whales in Mass Bay and east of Boston and off Cape Ann in some years, especially in April, when right whales are leaving the bay. The densest aggregations are always in Cape Cod Bay, but when the aggregations disperse, whales can be seen elsewhere in adjacent waters as they move to points north and east in the spring months. So again, the rationale of this is to reduce the potential of any entanglement in, in waters under the jurisdiction of the Commonwealth. Over the past five years, some whales have lingered into early May, and DMF has kept Cape Cod Bay closed, and this will still be the plan. We're not proposing any changes to that approach or to that regulatory authority. The next slide, please, number 12. The proposed closure is depicted in deep red that is adjacent to the, the pink area, and that is the area off of what appears to be Plymouth through about Situate, the southern part of Situate. This area has remained open since the DMF conservation program was enacted in 1997. It was last year that we learned that, that there was gill net gear being fished in the area. It was an oversight on our part that that area remained open. It, once upon a time, the Critical Habitat was only in Cape Cod Bay, and it was basically the western border of the Critical Habitat was that 70, 30 line that goes from the canal north. And so you can see that that area is, was remained open, and so it is our intent to propose that during the February through April period, that area include gill nets as part of the fixed gear closure as well. We've also learned since the rules were enacted back in the 90s that in some years, right whales can be seen on that western side of the bay, which historically was not part of the original Critical Habitat, but surveillance over the last 24 years has demonstrated in some years, you can find them over there in significant numbers. Next slide, please, number 13. The proposed recreational lobster crap, trap closed season, this would create a closed season to buoyed trap fishing. It would not affect permit holders who want to use scuba, nor would it affect the setting of traps in the Cape Cod Canal where already vertical buoy lines are prohibited. Most fishermen who fish in the canal use some kind of weighted wire and, or tie the, the traps off to the rock, so there's no, there's no potential of entanglement there. Recreational trap fishing is already included in the existing Cape Cod area seasonal closure. So it, it would, but this would apply statewide. We have chosen the day after Columbus Day to the Friday prior to Memorial Day. We've, it's, we don't have excellent statistics on how much fishing goes on during the winter. We have surveyed the recreational permit holders about five years ago. We've written a technical paper based on the results. We got excellent feedback and excellent response to the survey. But, you know, folks have pointed out to us that it's often seen that you can find abandoned recreational gear or you see gear in the water at a time when the marinas and the mooring areas are completely devoid of boats. And so we do know that it's, it's fairly common for recreational lobster men to occasionally lose traps. It's probably a higher gear loss than, than most of the commercial fishermen. Despite issuing over 6,400 permits in 2020 and a 10-trap allowance, the overall contribution to traps fished is lower than might appear. Recreational trap fishing accounts for only about 5% of all lobster traps in state waters. The average number of reported traps fished is around seven per permit, not 10, which is the maximum allowed, and many permits actually don't fish traps at all. They fish with scuba. And also, many permit holders report they did not fish. So nevertheless, there is evidence that many novice recreational permit holders are apt to lose or abandon traps. And by giving, by, by creating a closed season, it gives the opportunity for the environmental police to, to see the gear, inspect the gear, notify the gear owners, or even haul the gear if, if possible. And so we think that this is a, a good, a good time to consider that proposal. When the environmental police patrol waters for gear left during the close season, about half the gear that is found and, and brought to shore tends to be attributable to recreational permit holders. Next slide, please, slide number 14. This may be the most substantive proposal that we're bringing forth tonight, and that is to require commercial trap pot fishermen to deploy vertical lines that part when subject to 1,700 pounds of pressure. A recent study produced by the New England Aquarium of Entanglements showed ropes with low breaking strength can reduce serious injury and mortality by at least 72%. Cooperative research with commercial lobstermen have demonstrated that ropes of these breaking strengths are strong enough in most cases to allow successful hauling of lobster gear. In essence, this research and proposal tries to hit the sweet spot for a line that is safe for the industry and beneficial for right whales. This, to comply with this particular rule, there's going to be a couple of options, as I mentioned before, one is to have a, a contrivance. The South Shore lobstermen have done a really good job of developing a sleeve, which is a, a device that, that would wrap two ends of a, of a cut rope and with a certain attachment technique, 1,700 pounds is a, is a reproducible and consistent breaking strength of that rope. And the other, some rope manufacturers have endeavored to create a rope that is 1,700 pound in its, in its continuous breaking strength. And that might be a good option for some fishermen who, who want to replace their buoy lines in their entirety. Mass Lobstimates Association have received grants to obtain distributed and test rope prototypes that have normal diameters but lower breaking strengths. And, and so we're, we're confident that this is a proposal that, that the industry could, could live with based on all the field testing that's going on. Next slide, please, number 15. The proposed maximum buoy line diameters. This line diameter proposal will prevent excessively strong rope from being fished in the water column in state waters, but we believe most intro fishermen are already fishing line of, of this diameter. One of the biggest challenges in solving the dilemma of entanglements is determining the source of the entangling gear. By making this rule, we can effectively rule out mass state waters whenever any rope is seen on a right whale with a diameter larger than, larger than what is allowed in the state fishery. It should be noticed that amendments to actual buoy line marking is not being proposed in this rulemaking, but will be in next year, once the National Marine Fisheries Service final rules are proposed. There is strong interest to have a distinct gear mark for each state's lobster fishery and possibly another mark identifying state versus federal waters, because fishing within each state, there are some who, fishermen who hail for mass ports, but also fish in the EEZ or even exclusively in the EEZ. Those details have yet to be worked out. And so there's, there'll be more to follow at a, at a future public hearing on that, but we felt it was premature at this time to make any proposals until NIMPs came out with their particular rules. Next slide. The single trap prohibition, the proposal is to prohibit commercial fishermen using vessels larger than 29 feet to fish single traps, and the proposed effective date is 2022. This particular graph, you can see the gray areas is where single traps are allowed now. They are, single traps are banned in the state waters portion of, of something that's not depicted there is where the state federal waters line is, but in the deeper waters of Cape Cod Bay, deeper waters of Mass Bay, single traps are not allowed. The rationale requires lobstermen fishing from larger platforms to trawl up their gear, thereby reducing the number of water, I'm sorry, vertical lines in the water column. Should be noted that fishermen fishing two or more trap trawls are already required to fish only one buoy line, although we don't think there's that many fishermen who actually fish what's affectionately known as doubles. Fewer vertical lines in the water column could reduce the risk of entanglement. And at the same time, smaller vessels fishing inshore will be allowed to fish single traps to promote fishermen's safety. Next slide, please. The seasonal lobster permit cap. The, capping the annual seasonal student permits at 150, that's a little bit higher than, than, than what we've ever, ever issued, where we're not seeking to reduce that fishery at all. We just want to cap it. This, this would cap the effort near the current level, continuing to allow young folks to gain commercial fishing experience and provide a means for young fishermen to enter the commercial fishery. As I mentioned earlier, the particular fishery is set by statute, is not something we regulate, but rather it's, it's in state law, limited to 25 traps with that three-month season, middle of June to the middle of September. Finally, the housekeeping measures. Like I mentioned before, there's, there's some rewrites of the, of the rules. There's some cleaning up. There's some elimination of, of the old Critical Habitat map is still in there. We're, we're seeking to eliminate that. Just, just do a, a good cleanup and a reconsolidation of the rules. So at this point, next slide, and slide number 19, at this point, I think we can At this point, I think we can take questions from the public on the presentation. I do have access to Bob Glenn and Aaron Burke, who collectively are working with me on the all matters concerning protected species, but also on the incidental take permit application. And of course, Jared Silver, who's the moderator, is, is the person who drafts our legal language. And so if there's any questions on, on any of that, we'd be happy to try to clarify things. So why don't we, why don't we take some questions, Jared? And if folks could, can simply ask questions and not editorialize and not get into the comments, we're going to come back to you for comments. So let's take any technical questions on the presentation.
All right. So if you have technical questions, please use the raise hand feature, and I will acknowledge you person by person. I'll provide you an opera, I'll allow you to talk and you have to unmute yourself once I recognize you. And so we'll start with Eric. Eric, you're allowed to talk. Please unmute yourself.
My question is, with these added regulations, how will that affect the 60% reduction in risk that NIMS wants?
Thank you, Eric.
Eric, the answer to that is, by and large, these are the regulations that are going to result in the 60% risk reduction. And we're just getting out ahead of these now. We're fully anticipating that which is going to be in the federal rules, but right whales will be arriving in our state waters in a, in a matter of a month. And, and we are, we are preemptively proposing these rules for this winter and, and spring. And I'd ask Bob Glenn if he'd like to add to that.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is that Dan is, is correct that this does, this, the baseline for these regulations are what was in our proposal to get us to the 60%, but we've added additional things that we anticipated are going to be necessary to both get us distinguished as our own unique fishery on the list of fisheries and also to achieve what's necessary for us to obtain an incidental take permit.
Eric, do you have a follow-up question? Or are you good? Thank you, Eric. Bob Mack, go ahead.
Yeah, personally, I'm really confused. Maybe this wasn't intended for the average person who's interested in ocean issues. I'm not necessarily average person. I curate some ocean films for an art center, but in any, any event, I'm confused as to how you can state that a 17,000 or 1,700 pound per pressure inch on, on, once a right whale was, or it did get entrapped, ensnared in it, that it, that because, just because it's not trailing a lobster, the pod itself, the buoy, how that is, that is acceptable? Could you, I just don't get that. And yeah, I just, if you could explain to me, it just seems to be, we've gotten in the weeds here real, real early on, and maybe it's, wasn't intended for someone who didn't have the fuller, fuller understanding. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Dan, I'll take that. Yeah, so that specific regulation, the 1,700 pound breaking strength line is one that has been proposed and endorsed by the Atlantic Large Whale Take Reduction Team, along with the National Marine Fishery Service. Based on studies conducted by the New England Aquarium, a published, a paper published by Amy Nolan et al. in 2015, looking at injury and scarification rates on whales, they determined that the preponderance of, of injury or serious injury on whales entangled in lighter lines that broke at lower rates was much lower than that, up to as much as 72% lower than in heavy lines. So that is, that's informed by scientific literature in, in the peer review, you know, peer reviewed scientific literature. Thank you.
And it can be proven that there's no mortality following that?
No, no one's saying that anything can be proven. We're saying that the scientific evidence supports that substantially lower rates of serious injury mortality based on the metrics that are used by the folks who, who study right whale injuries.
Okay, gotcha.
Want to get back to Jay Todd?
I do.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm kind of a virgin with this stuff. So my question is, when, when this closure starts, given that it's only about seven weeks away, I know a lot of people have some trepidation about, you know, the short period of time we're going to have to be able to start getting our gear out for February 1st. So I guess my question is, are there any considerations going to be made, given the time of year it is and weather considerations, that if, if somebody can't get all their gear out of state waters in that timeframe, will concessions be made to allow people to be able to get their gear out if it goes beyond that point?
Well, the rules have not been filed yet, so in order for this rule to go into effect for February 1st start time, we would have to file the rules in sufficient time to do that. And so it is our intent to get these close to the, to the start date as possible. What we absolutely don't want is, is people to, is fishermen to get seriously injured or killed trying to remove gear, you know, in, in bad weather. And so we understand that it's the worst time of year to be out on the water. My recommendation is to stop bringing the gear home now, but I, I don't want to sound presumptuous, but we've, we've done all we can to try to, you know, work through the industry groups and, and try to get the word out that, that this has been, you know, in, in the works for some time. But history has shown that when we've enacted these kinds of rules and there were extenuating circumstances, you know, we've worked with the environmental police to, to be reasonable. We've also helped fishermen find other fishermen who might be in the water who could help remove the gear. What we don't want is, is for fishermen to wait until January 29th and say, well, jeez, it's windy today, I can't get the gear. So, but we understand that there's some real life realities and, and, and weather issues and safety issues, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to pledge to you that, that this rule wouldn't be enforced at that time, but we, we're reasonable.
John Haviland, you're recognized?
Thank you very much, Jared. Can you hear me?
I can, yes, John.
The question is, is that it was stated that we have two minutes, so my question would be, is it two minutes of questioning or is it two minutes of questioning and answer period?
That's particularly for the comments, so if you have a question, go right ahead.
Well, I have a couple of questions, so I just didn't want to be cut off. It was just stated that the, it has to, on January 7th, there'll be a meeting with the Massachusetts Marine Commission, and it has to pass by majority. So if it does, if it does in fact get passed, this is going to be a two-part question on, on A, and that would be if it does get passed on January 7th, you have the timeline of posting it and it being legal by the end of the month, would that be, is that feasible?
Correct, that is feasible.
Okay. Second thing is, is that if it did not pass the Marine Commission, then this is all muted and it goes away. Would that be a yes or no answer?
That's not quite a yes or no answer. I mean, the director has the authority to revise any recommendation he makes to the Marine Fisheries Commission. If ultimately no recommendation is passed, then the rules cannot change except for an emergency regulation.
Okay, thank you. The next question would be the incidental take permit. Does the Division Marine Fishery Service have a timeline to which they may be successful to obtain that?
Bob, do you want to address that?
So the, the, the process of obtaining an incidental take permit is an iterative process. We're working with National Marine Fishery Service. In their handbook for, for doing this, they said a typical application takes anywhere from two to four years. Based on preliminary consultation that we've had with them, ours is not what they would consider an order, an ordinary one, because we're dealing with multiple fisheries that we have to get take permit for, as well as multiple species that we have to work with. So the timeline on this for getting is somewhere on the order of, of two plus years.
Thank you, Bob. The next question would be, could you tell me how many, if this were to be implemented, and currently the closure is 3,076 square nautical miles between state waters and federal waters, how many more miles total of the closure would the state have? Would it be in the essence of another 2,000 miles or, or do you have that information?
John, that's not a calculation that I have right at my fingertips right now, but I'd be happy to get that information for you and follow up directly with you.
Okay, thank you. And basically the last question that I have, if I am still in my two minutes, and that is that, and the housekeeping section, it says DMF proposes to revise and update the purpose of the state protective species regulations so that it better reflects the current approach to managing protected species. Could you elaborate on what type of house cleaning, housekeeping you're going to be doing and what the new language would be?
And do you want me to handle this?
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So John, a lot of the, the purpose and scope language was developed back in the 1990s and early 2000s when the protected species regulations went into effect. The purposes scope section is being updated to better reflect that a lot of this is, a lot of the management of protected species is done through the take, take reduction teams that were implementing seasonal closures, all of which is being proposed tonight. The, the language that is currently there is, is rather outdated in terms of what it references. You know, it deals a lot with the, the prior regime, the critical habitat area, and what was on the books, what was being developed about 20 years ago. So this would be an update to bring us up to what is being done now.
All right, thank you. And the last question, if I have the time, and that would be a 1,700 pound contrivance. I know that the state of Maine has been working on, let me rephrase that, has, has done a study in regards to a knot in a vertical line would cut the breaking strength by 50%. I don't know how, if that's moving forward or not, but the question that I pose would be, how is anyone going to actually verify or law enforcement, law enforcement is going to obtain that my vertical line breaks at 1,700 pounds?
I'll take this, Dan. So John, what we're doing right now is we're, we're in the, you know, early stages of working with National Marine Fishery Service, as well as the other states to come up with a list of contrivances and/or options, equipment options that fishermen can use to achieve the 1,700 pound. The metric that National Marine Fishery Service has put forward is that they have to be repeatable, enforceable, and measurable. And so those three metrics. The other thing in, in Maine has been testing some knots, and we've had some, some conference calls with a group of gear people relative to that. And all I can say is, while there's nothing definitive at this point, I know that National Marine Fishery Service has expressed concerns about using knots as one of the possible contrivances because it's not necessarily repeatable or enforceable, because a knot, as you very well know, could be a knot in what size line and not, you know, a knot on what breaking strength or what type of line doesn't necessarily break at 1,700 pounds. And that, and there's also concern expressed by folks who work on the disentanglement team that knots tend to get caught in the baleen, kind of like a jam cleat. And so it's my anticipation, although it's, it's preliminary, that, that knots may not be on, on the approved list, although I cannot comment with 100% confidence because there is not a list yet of authorized options by National Marine Fishery Service.
One, one last follow-up, Bob, that you just mentioned, and I didn't have this until you made the statement, and that is that, so when would that contrivance, if this were to go into effect February 1st, let me think, this is what, December 8th, I believe. So when would we find out what a legal contrivance would be before February 1st? And would there be then enough time to which the industry can change their vertical lines?
Sure. Right. And so, you know, you're, you're aptly pointing out that the timeline here is difficult. So a couple of things is first is, it would be the closure would be in effect in February 1st. The open season wouldn't be at least until May 1st, so it gives us a little bit more time. Still short, though. Out of the gate, we're confident right now that the two things that would be improved right off the bat are the, are the south shore sleeves as well as 1,700 pound line that we can, you know, we, we can, we've had, you know, we get samples of, have broken and have shown that it can break at 1,700. Both NIMS and DMF and Maine DMR gear people are working with manufacturers on getting additional samples of other line and that we, you know, anticipate to purchase more distributed to the industry to test. And so we're, we're moving forward as we can. If for some reason we can't get enough options on the table, you know, in time, then, you know, well, you know, at this point, we haven't had a, you know, we haven't implemented the rule. And so full implementation or as an implementation for National Marine Fishery Service, they haven't published their rules yet, yet, so we don't know what those are. But we're, you know, understand your concerns and we're working to address them.
I'd like to thank Jared as the moderator for giving me the time to ask these questions.
Thank you, John. David Abel? David Abel, you can unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, sorry, can you hear me?
I can, David.
Okay, great, thank you. So I had a few questions. The first is, I'd appreciate if you could tell me roughly how many lobstermen this will affect. And just so everybody knows, this is David Abel, I'm a reporter with the Boston Globe. And has there been any study of the economic impact of these regulations and how it might affect many of the fishermen and their bottom line? And then finally, well, the next is, you, you talked a bit about when you expect this, these regulations to take effect, but is it fair for me to say that the goal is to have them completed by February 1st? And why don't you start with that? And I have one more question after that.
Well, David, this is Dan, so let me give a, a partial answer to the first one. How many will this affect? We aren't, I mean, the whole population of state waters permit holders is around, of active permit holders is around 800, but about over 100 of them have federal permits, so we're not sure that they'll, that gear will all come home. It might be shifted into the EEZ. We do know that during those months, the annual landings of, of lobsters is about 3% of, of the total. It's under 5% on an annual basis of, of the total. We presume that the lobster that aren't captured will still be there when the fishing starts in May. We do recognize that there is a, that there is a burden attributable to having to bring the gear home and put the gear back out, but we don't have any, any estimates of that at this time, but we, we could, we could try to get that for you.
I would appreciate that. And my other question is, what is DMF's plan if NIMS doesn't provide an incidental take permit? And would that potentially require that the fishery be closed, the lobster fishery, and all fixed gear fisheries be closed entirely for the whole year?
I think that's a question up to the courts because if that's what you're asking, that's what the litigation is about. As far as the, the state waters fishery, it, it does resemble fisheries in other jurisdictions. So it would surprise me if the- So it would surprise me if the, if the fishery had to be closed for failure to get an ITP. But we are working to get the ITP and are willing to modify our management strategies to meet those, meet those goals.
Okay. And thank you, sir. If you guys could provide me any more specifics on the numbers. Of fishermen that would affect and any more specifics on, on economic impacts, that would be great. And finally, John Havlin asked how this will be enforced. Can you, I didn't hear an answer to that. Can you say a little bit more about how you would, how? DMF would know that there would be breaking, that everybody will be using breaking strength that. That people won't be fishing during specific times?
Well, as far as John's question about how it'll be enforced, the, the two most common. Methods of, of rigging the, the gear. Well, the one most common one is one that John himself developed with a company called Nova Braid. That creates the sleeve and John's worked very hard to. Help create the, the methods of, of rigging that gear. And so we're confident that that is something that is inspectable. If fishermen wanted to use their existing vertical line rope. Make a cut in it and then reattach it with the sleeve, it is a reproducible method. As far as breaking strength rope, Mass Lobsterman's Association and others are working with gear manufacturers to. Create a rope that is, that is unique in its, in its look in terms of the, you know, the tracers and the style and. And so I'm, I'm, I'm imagining that, that the 1700 pound rope is rope that is going to. Be recognizable in terms of its, if its shape, its, its feel. And coming from the manufacturer will be certified as such. It would be obviously difficult if, if the 1700 pound rope that is being manufactured for the industry. Was coming in all shapes and sizes that obviously presents a more, a more difficult challenge for enforcement.
Will there be, will, will there be state environmental police actually hauling gear to check that, that, you know?
I apologize for that.
So your, your question is, will the environmental police be hauling the gear during the closure?
No, I'm, I'm saying during, during the post closure, when you would expect the. Breaking strength rope to be universally used, let's say in May. Would, like, how would you know? I mean, given that thousands of, of vertical buoy lines that are used. I mean, will, how, how, you know, will the state know that people are not just using their other rope? And have actually, you know, adhering to the regulations? Will environmental police actually be like hauling traps to check?
Yeah, it can be hauled and inspected. Environmental police can board the boat while the boat is hauling the gear. The, the environmental police and DMF do have, you know, vessels with haulers that we could look at, at that. But I'm expecting a fair amount of compliance with the, with the industry because this has been in the works for, for. At least two years. And I know that the, that the association and a lot of the, the industry leaders have taken this seriously and. I'm not expecting a whole lot of non-compliance.
Okay, this will be my final question. It, it might be expensive for a lot of these fishermen to buy additional rope or, or use sleeves in their rope. Is the state. Envisioning any state or federal aid to support that transition?
Dan, I'll, I'll take this.
Yep.
So yeah, David, we're, we have a couple of different initiatives going on. One is a grant that we receive. From National Marine Fishery Service, which we do assist the mass lobster industry with transitioning over to weak rope and weak contrivances. With that grant, we've all already bought. Over 4,000 south shore sleeves and 450 coils of rope that we're planning to start to distribute. And have staff work with them to also come up with additional contrivances that we can have tested and approved. In addition to that, we're hoping to get some additional state level funding that's in the works. Which would double those efforts relative to buying additional gear that we would, we plan to distribute to the industry at no cost. So while we can't completely defer 100% of the cost, we're doing our best to try to take a fairly big chunk out of it.
How much roughly?
Total funding initially is, right now in hand is 200,000. And as I said, we're hoping that that doubles.
Thank you very much.
Damian P., you may unmute yourself. You are recognized.
Yeah, I also had some questions about the breaking strength, the 1700 pound breaking strength. I think. One had been when it would be required. I think that was answered for. The upcoming season in May. Also, if, if using sleeves, would it be one, one breaking point per, per. Buoy line? Or would there be required multiple breaking points per buoy line? And is there any estimate cost? Yet on, on the sleeves themselves and the availability of the sleeves to cover all fishermen?
Bob, are you available to respond to that?
Yeah. So cut out for a second, but I think I, what the question that I heard was is, is how many, how many places are there going to have to be weak? Within the rope? And what is an estimate of the cost? Is that?
Yes, that's it. Yep.
Okay. So right now, what's proposed in, in the federal rules that we anticipate are going to come out is that you're going to have to have. Weak link in three spots, one in each third of the buoy line. The cost of a link, of a weak link, I believe is about $5 each. Don't quote me of that. It's on. I don't have the invoice right in front of me. I can look it up and, and put it in the chat in a second. But it's, it's roughly that. The availability wise, we just ordered 4,000 of them and it took about two weeks to get from Nova Braid. So they're, they're readily available and Nova Braid is aware of these. Regulations and anticipates that there's likely to be more demand. So I don't think getting them will be a problem.
Damian, do you have a follow up question?
No, that's it, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, just give me a moment, please. Neil, you are recognized. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. I want to state that I'm a recreational or. I want to say more importantly, a subsistence fisherman. I do not fish commercially just for recreational and, and, and subsistence. What I sort of read in between the lines and the legislation as proposed. Is, is a rather, rather biased and unfair balance of, of. Favoring the commercial guys over recreational guys. To the extent you're going to limit the, the, cut the recreational. Season by seven months, down to four, down to five months. And I, I think that's a little.
Yeah, Neil, I think that falls in the, in the comment category. So. Do you have a particular question? Cause we're in the question period here.
Okay. I want to understand how that got written into the legislation. I looked through the, the initial draft and, and there is no differentiation between commercial and recreational fishing. In that draft, but it shows it, he struck, struck out. And then the, the, I want to say it's part four. Of that section that, that, that limits the recreational guys. Where did that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that originated from us, you know, based on the survey of permit holders. We've, we believe that the vast majority of permit holders fish about a five month season. You know, in, in most of the cases when we find abandoned gear and we reach out to the, to the owners. Those, those, they've stopped fishing for months. And so, but. So anyway, so it's, it's, we think it's sort of consistent with how the fishery is conducted now, but, you know. General, it's not fair for me to generalize that everybody fishes that way. So when we get to the comment section, feel free to. To set us straight on, on how you fish and what you think, if there should be a closure or not. So we can get to that.
Okay, thank you. I.
Sorry to cut you off there, Neil. I got a little quick with the trigger. We'll look forward to your comment. Mike Lane? Mike Lane, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself.
All right. Can you hear me?
I can, Mike.
Okay, my first question, I guess, would be. How many whale entanglements can be traced back to the mass lobsterman? In the last six years of the closure?
Zero.
Okay. And is there a review process for this closure? If we have a distributional shift of whales out of this area, this, is this going to be? Reviewed every two, four, or five years? And, you know, if it's going to be some time when these whales will move out of this area and not return. And as we know, we have a closure in the Great South Channel, which there's no whales are present and still the closure exists. Are we going to have a review process for this?
Mike, it's my understanding that every three years, our incidental take permit will be reviewed. And, and it'll be determined whether or not we could still, if we're giving it, if we're still maintaining the necessary. No injury to, to negligible impact determination. It's at that time where, yeah, every regulation would, would be reviewed. Potentially things that are not, you know, not deemed necessary could be relaxed. And it's also possible that we, other additional measures could be levied at that point.
Okay, so this could be, if there was a closure put in place, this could be reversed, pending the whales leave for, you know, X amount of years and don't show up again. My last question would be, is the wording in this, is this going to be a pot trap closure? You know where I'm going with this one?
No, go ahead, Mike.
No, I'm just saying, is the wording going to be, it's going to be a pot trap closure? You know, as, as on the federal level, where they're trying to reverse that rule and to allow some ropeless fishing. Are we going to have the same wording where it's going to, you know, stifle ropeless fishing?
No, no.
Okay. And I guess, is, what about longline gear? But if we want to. You know, put, I know. Go hook in for Haddock in April. Is this going to be, so that's going to stop that from occurring? You know what I mean?
That's a good question, and I would suggest that you make that comment. It's my understanding with longline gear is the gear is deployed and, and within. Minutes of the last hook being put out, it's retrieved. So.
No, a lot of the longline gear will be, is deployed and then usually left overnight or during a high cost tie, then retrieved, you know, 10, 12 hours later.
Yep, that's, that's a good point. So if I were you, I would feel free to make that comment in the comment section. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, cause I just, you know, trying to plan for future fisheries. I mean, we have a closure. This is really gonna. This will really close down the whole state to any type of income being made. You know, just trying to figure out what else we can do when we take the traps in to, you know. Put something in our pockets.
Yep.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Q Half Yard, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself. Q Half Yard?
Hello?
Hello, I can hear you.
Oh, good. Right. Thank you. Yes, with the. The 1700 pound breaking strain, the lines as proposed. The figures are that that would alleviate 72% of. Whales being. Damaged, is that right? Affected in some way? Presumably that leaves 28% who are affected substantially. What exactly does that mean? And with the current levels of population. Is there any kind of projection? Any kind of modeling that's been done on what effect that would have on the long term? Levels of population?
I'll, I'll take a stab at this. So first and foremost is, is that that 72%. Figure is in there, in the, is a reduction in the severity of entanglement. And so that's in the, in a case where an entanglement occurs. The outcome is 72% less likely to cause serious injury in the event that it happens. And in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have two entanglements that are attributable to Massachusetts lobster fishing gear in state waters. Since 2009 and, or ever, that's, that's, we don't have, we have two right whale entanglements attributable to that. In both cases, those animals were successfully disentangled and released. So what we're saying is the 1700 pound line, in the event that an entanglement does occur, which is an extraordinarily. Unlike unusual event in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That if that does happen, it's likely to reduce the severity of injury by a substantial portion.
Right.
Thank you. Tom McShane?
Hi, thank you. Dan or Bobby, the one of you. Dan stated that. These regulations would achieve the 60% risk reduction that the TRT is looking for. My question is that given that the Endangered Species Act requires less than one death per year. And yet we've seen 32 deaths since 2017. How can we get an incidental take permit? And are we going to have to do more?
I'll take a stab at this. Yeah, so. To get an incidental take permit, we, we will have to. Go through a NEPA review and they'll have to determine that the risk posed by the Massachusetts lobster fishery. Does not pose a, you know, a substantial risk. They call it negligible impact determination. If they determine that, that the regulations in place, the monitoring program, mitigation measures we have in place are sufficient, then we would get it. Again, in this particular case, we're talking about the state waters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. When you talk about the 32. Right whale entanglements, none of those are attributable to state waters fishing gear. Over half of those are attributable to Canada. A portion are attributable to ship strikes and there is some other portion attributable to US fishing gear. If you look at the entanglement record, a large, the vast majority of all those are entanglements and mortalities that have occurred in very large diameter fishing line. Line in excess of a half inch in diameter. That gear is not gear that is used in state waters. We use small, much smaller diameter lines. So it's more indicative of rope. That is used either in, typically in offshore lobster or in many cases, what we're finding in recent years, even in the entanglements that are found in, in United States waters. Are indicative of Canadian snow crab gear.
And, and the question that I, I guess the, the important follow up question that I have. Is that given the fact that we all want to save the industry and the whales. Why can we not talk about ropeless fishing gear at this point? It seems that's the way, one way that we can save both the industry and the whales. And at least remove the current state regulation that requires rope.
I'll take a crack at that, Bob. We certainly can talk about ropeless. We talk about it every day. But at, at this point, the technology to allow fishermen to see each other's gear. So that they don't set over one another and so that draggers don't set over or plow through someone else's gear. That, that's not ready for primetime and there's. I know there's a substantial amount of investment going in to the questions of how to be able to detect the presence of the gear, but. Vertical lines are fished for safety reasons and we are very apprehensive about. The impacts of. the impacts of fishermen setting over one another, not only similar gears, but competing gears or different gears. And this is a work in progress. Tonight's proposals are for regulations changes. We don't feel that we could, in good faith, at this point, have lobstermen set unbuoyed gear without excluding the other gears from that area. And we just haven't endeavored to do that yet, mainly because we're waiting for that technology to be developed to be able to detect the gear. There's no question that pop-up buoys can work. If you're the only person fishing in the ocean, you can certainly hide your traps on the ocean floor and flip a switch and get that buoy to pop to the surface. The challenge is allowing fishermen to coexist side by side with one another. A typical lobster trawl from one end to the other is about a quarter to a half mile long. Traps are typically spaced between 90 and 180 feet apart, and are fished in trawls of 10 to 25. So you can see how the challenges of not being able to see another fisherman's gear and the problems that could cause. We also know there was a vessel that was sunk about seven or eight years ago off of Provincetown when it encountered a long string of lobster traps. It was a small scalper. When the gear was brought up high above the vessels, it altered the center of gravity, and the boat flipped, and the captain was lost. So there were some serious unintended consequences of going to a ropeless fishery. And that's why we're not talking about it tonight, because it needs more work.
In terms of, Bob, I think it was mentioned that we're hoping to go from $200,000 to $400,000 worth of funding for the weak rope, which seems to be, to be honest with you, not going to get the job done. Are we willing to invest that kind of resources into solving the problem of making sure that lobstermen can see each other's gears for ropeless?
Yeah, you know what? You're drifting into the comments section, I think that's a rhetorical question.
I guess the question is, how much are we spending on that policy?
The Commonwealth has received a grant from the National, I'm sorry, from the SMFC to assist fishermen in transitioning over to this gear. So it's not just the gear itself, but it's also an employee to work with the fishermen on some of these breakaway features that's already baked into what we think is going to be the federal plan, plus the materials involved. So that's short money, because we do anticipate that at the current price of these pop-up devices, it would cost around $100 million to outfit the Massachusetts fishery. And so I can't speak to what resources we have, except, or that we like to have, except what resources we do have. And Bob described the grant that we got to assist fishermen to make this particular transition. Well, let's stick to questions, because we want to get going here and start to take comments, because, Tom, it sounds like that's a comment you want to make.
Thanks, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Tom. OS, you're recognized, you can unmute yourself. OS? OS, I'm going to come back to you. Chuck Gilchrist, you can unmute yourself, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Full disclosure, I am a representative for NovaBraid, the company that is manufacturing the South Shore sleeves. And my question was, if we're going to be an essential part of the supply chain for some of these contrivances, it would be very, and I don't mean to negate what was said earlier, it would be very, very helpful if some of the regulatory folks would actually reach out to NovaBraid to be able to discuss the scope of what's going to be necessary should these items get put into place. And to that end, it was discussed as to, you know, how many are we anticipating using? Now, in one of the slides, it did say that only one vertical line per trawl would be allowed.
No, 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 that's not true.
Okay, I'll go back to, I don't know if that was the...
It's for doubles and triples only.
For doubles and triples, okay. Okay, so a normal trawl will still be allowed to vertical lines. Okay. So what are we anticipating here? You folks have a pretty good idea as to how many lobster licenses that were issued, and how many traps are allowed. It'd be really nice for us to know what we're going to need to make.
Yeah, that's a good question. The calculation's even a little bit more elaborate, because it's not just traps times permits, it's the configuration. And we do receive from every commercial lobsterman an annual report of how many vertical lines they fish. But I will be glad to get back to you with that answer this week, to forecast that, for sure.
I believe Rob Martin gave you my contact information, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, the only thing I would add in, Dan, it's difficult to estimate, is we don't know, we don't have a sense of how many fishermen are going to opt for a NovaBraid sleeve versus the full 1,700-pound rope versus splicing in a piece of 1,700-pound rope, or what potential all the contrivances are. So even if, you know, it's a tough thing for us to estimate, because we don't know what each one of our fishermen are going to opt for. But I do know that these regulations relative to 1,700-pound are not just being proposed in Massachusetts, they are part of the federal rule that is slated to come out.
I'll finish that for Bob. It's slated to come out as a proposed final rule in the next month or so, and it's expected to be a final, final rule by the end of May.
Pretty difficult to exactly quantify.
Yeah, okay, well, I appreciate that. I know that Maine was not being, they were questioning some of the findings for the take-reduction team, and have they now switched their tack if we've got Mainers fishing down in Massachusetts waters?
Currently, as I understand it, and again, I can't say with 100% certainty, because NIPS has not published their final rule, but it is my understanding that that will be a requirement for all state waters fishermen in Maine, Massachusetts, etc.
Thank you very much.
Jared, are we ready to get to comments?
We have a couple more questions, Dan. We have Lita Zimmerman.
Hi there, thanks very much for taking my questions. I just have a couple of quick ones. And first, I just want to give a shout out to fishermen in Massachusetts waters. You're deeply appreciated, and you're doing essential work, so just know that. First question is, the 1,700-pound rope, that's been researched, but does that also apply to, is that the kind of force that a younger right whale, such as the right whales that are now on their way up, the calves that are coming up, could actually escape from?
No, a juvenile right whale cannot escape from 1,700-pound. However, our fishery will be closed at the time of year in which we've ever seen calf right whales in our waters.
Okay, because I just heard that there's news today that there are two young ones that are spotted off Georgia today, so that's good news. Second question is, the degree to which there is cooperation with Canada at this point to protect the right whales? Is everybody coming together around the same measures?
So I wouldn't necessarily classify it that everyone's coming around those measures, it's kind of a complicated thing. I sit on the take-reduction team, I sit on the Northeast recovery, right whale recovery implementation team. Canada is at the table, and all those deliberations and discussions. And certainly, I know that both our state government, as well as the federal government, has put a lot of pressure on Canada to come up to speed to make their regulations more stringent. Canada has opted for more of a dynamic area closure system whereby they close fisheries and open fisheries based on aerial surveillance. They've had some success with it, but also some other failures, because it's very dependent on when they can get out. As far as weak ropes and other things, I'm not sure. But certainly, they're aware of what we're doing, we're aware of what they're doing, but we have no say over ultimately what they...
He's gone.
He's gone out again.
Yeah, okay, I think I got the gist of that. And just the last fast question. So the 60% risk reduction that you're aiming for, is there an actual number of right whale takings that can be translated when you offer that 60% risk reduction that are considered acceptable for the permit you're seeking?
I think we lost Bob. So your question is, would you repeat the question?
Sure, I believe I heard one of you say earlier that you are looking for a 60% risk reduction in your new regulations. Is that correct, in terms of the impacts on the right whale?
Actually, no. Well, the 60% reduction is what the take-reduction team endeavored to do throughout the range within the United States.
I see.
And then we are contributing to that. And now with, so that's, as I mentioned in one of my earlier slides, there's the conservation that is to meet the spirit and the terms of the take-reduction plan, and then here comes the litigation with our incidental take permit application. So we believe that there is more than 60% risk reduction, because we are now talking about closing all of state waters during those three months.
I see.
And the fact that we keep our waters closed, as we have over the last six or seven years, in early May, when right whales linger, gets us a lot of credit with the National Marine Fisheries Service modelers when they try to calculate risk. They look at that action that we take annually, and they give us a ton of credit for that.
Okay, and final, final. There is no way to identify the fishing gear injuries that some of these whales carry with them, is that correct? You don't know if they've been injured and have lost the gear? We don't know whether they're weakened by gear from Massachusetts or from some other state, is that correct?
I'll take, yeah, go ahead, Bob. This, Dan, so in order for a fishing gear to be dangerous to a whale, whales and the fishing gear have to overlap in space and time. Massachusetts coastal waters host up to 2/3 of the entire world population of right whales in Cape Cod Bay at a time of year typically between February and April. Our fishery is closed during that time, there are no vertical lines in that area.
Here he goes, all right, I'm done, I want to give other people an opportunity, thank you.
All right, Dan, we have seven more questions at the end of these, I'm going to cut off new questions that come up.
Go ahead.
Jeff Kuna, or Jeff Connor? And fixed fishing gear.
Good evening, DMF, Jeffrey Canada down on Martha's Vineyard. I'm visually impaired, Dan, and I was trying to see your slides. It looks like a lot of these proposals are for Cape Cod Bay and Mass Bay, but when I hear like the 29-foot and greater vessel fishing recreational must be on a 10-pot trawl, that's for all state waters?
Yes, for the lobster fishery.
Right.
The proposal is not for all vessels 29 or feet or greater to be on a 10-pot trawl, but just to fish trawled gear?
Right, for recreational.
No, commercial only.
Commercial only, okay. But there are some recreational proposals in there that would affect, say, Nantucket Sound and Vineyard Sound.
The seasonal closure from Columbus Day to Memorial Day would affect the entire recreational lobster fishery, as would the 5/16 inch diameter buoy line for the recreational lobster fishery.
Okay, so my question is, what about subtitle aquaculture gear in those areas? There's been no, made no mention of it at all, and I'm not sure if there are any in Mass Bay and Cape Cod Bay, but there is some in Vineyard Sound and Nantucket Sound. I know that's not what this public hearing is regarding, but maybe you could speak to that before you let me go.
Yeah, we are not intending on regulating subtitle aquaculture gear. Almost all of it is very, very close to shore, and we do have guidelines about keeping the lines under tension and marking the line, but we don't believe that that is a necessary thing for us to regulate at this time.
Okay, I think I'm going to need to talk to you more on that later, but thank you for answering the questions.
Okay, yep.
Brian Sharp, you're recognized.
Hi, good evening, thank you, DMF, for hosting this hearing today. Quick question on the 1,700-pound breaking contrivances. How is that different than the existing weak link legislation? Because in looking through the strike-through version, links are still in there, but then the section's been added about the 1,700-pound contrivances.
Bob, are you on?
Yep, I'm here, Dan. So Brian, you're talking about the original weak links. Those are specific only to the buoy itself and where it's attached, not to the multiple locations where a weak rope or a weak contrivance or sleeve has to be implemented in the buoy line.
So there will be further stipulations that come along showing where those need to be in the buoy line?
Yep, yes, we're anticipating that they'll be required in multiple locations. Again, we're a little hesitant to define that exactly, because we're trying to make it sync up with the federal rules and what every other state is going to be doing. But our anticipation, it'll be in multiple locations along the buoy line.
Okay, there, thank you.
Michael Ossie?
Hey, can you hear me?
I can, Michael.
Hey, my question, it's in regards to the no-trawl zone of Gosnold down in Buzzards Bay, where you're prohibiting single-trap fishing to anything greater than 29 feet. Is that going to open up the no-trawl zone? And will there be a minimum and/or maximum trawl length?
Yeah, it's a good question. For those on the call who aren't aware, there's this very ancient state law that goes back many, many, many decades that requires in the town waters of Gosnold, which is around the Elizabeth Island chain from Cuddy Hunk to Goshawn, only if anybody fishes lobster traps, they must be set as singles, one trap, one buoy line, one buoy. And obviously, that particular rule is inconsistent with some of our management proposals moving forward. And we have asked the governor's office to file legislation to repeal that particular rule. We think it's out of date, and it should be amended. But as far as maximum length, we don't see that happening. And again, this wouldn't be a mandate to do away with singles, but it would be, in terms of... a, in, in terms of the statutory change, it would be an allowance for trawels. But the other, this other rule would apply. You know, the, and above 30 feet and greater would have to go to some kind of a multiple pot trowel, doubles, triples, something.
Okay, so nothing greater than 29 feet would be able to fish a single?
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, that's all I got, thank you.
And you know, and I just want to add that in a future round of rulemaking, when we, when we get into the weatherback turtle issues, that will be addressed more specifically.
Beth Cassoni.
Good evening, Jared Silver, Dan McCannon and Bob Glenn. Thank you so much. I'd like to say thank you to everyone for your previous questions. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. I know there's a lot of questions around coloration. States have already chosen colors and it was brought to our attention last night that if Massachusetts is thinking about orange as a color, we might want to rethink that because it's, it's indicative of the snow crab fishery in Canada. So I guess that's a question for Bob.
So Beth, I'm aware of that, but the only thing I'm not too worried about is that the snow crab fishery in Canada uses three quarter inch line and we're going to have ban on anything over three eights. So I mean, yes, we could, we could pick a different color if that makes sense, but.
Nope.
Something we can discuss offline.
Yeah, and Beth, the reason that we're not proposing any specific marking at this time tonight is because we are actually waiting for nymphs to come out with their proposed final rules. And it's still being debated and discussed as to whether or not we can accommodate having not only a Massachusetts mark, but then a EEZ versus state waters Massachusetts mark, and whether or not it's better to have the EEZ fishermen fish a second level of marking or the state waters fishermen. So you can see that the more you mark and the more you try to slice the, the fishery, the, the population of fishermen and, and the geography, it gets kind of complicated. And we know that a lot of fishermen fish from state to federal waters, either side of a, of an imaginary line. And so this is still a work in progress.
Okay. And then I just have a follow-up question on the 1700 pound vertical line. The Massachusetts Lobstermen's Association in conjunction with the Lobster Foundation purchased $50,000 of the red 1700 pound vertical line and has distributed over 700 coils. So now we have 2.0 version and it looks like a candy cane, which we've sent some samples up to Maine to be tested. And National Marine Fisheries Service has kind of nodded that they like the distinction because it's identifiable. My question is, can we still use the red, red rope that's breaking at 1700 pounds and now this red candy cane rope? Because we don't want to just throw 50, actually we purchased another four pallets of it. So we just don't want to throw $65,000 away.
Right. Bob, you with us?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I keep losing internet service here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
I missed most of your question, Beth, I apologize.
It's about the red rope that we purchased previously with.
The candy cane rope, I heard that.
No, previous, not the candy cane, the red rope, the first version's all red. So we want to know if we can still use it because now we've kind of moved on to the candy cane rope and nymphs likes the coloration. So we don't want to just discard $65,000 worth of rope that's a year old.
Yeah, no, that I, I agree 100%. And we have, I just purchased a bunch of that to distribute as well.
Okay.
Bottom line is, is that the rope has to break at 1700 pounds and it does.
Regardless.
So, yeah, we're not going to, there's still going to have to be orange. If color orange is, is the color for Massachusetts, you still have to put orange marks in that. So it doesn't matter what color that the underlying weak rope is.
Okay. And then I have a technical comment. Some of our board members weren't able to get on tonight. Just, I don't know what happened earlier, but a bunch of guys texted me and said they couldn't get on the meeting. So I'll put it up on YouTube and they have tomorrow night to get on to. So that's it from me. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
All right, Dan, we're down to two last questions. Steve, you're up. Steve?
Yep, can you hear me?
I can, Steve.
All right, so, so I have a question. These three weak links, obviously I, I get it. It's no different than the three red marks that we use now. My question is, is we move from say 12 feet of water to 200 feet of water throughout the course of the, of the summer months when we're fishing? What, what do we do? Or, or if we reef the end line up when we're in 12 feet of water, are we still required to have these three, these three break on, you know, weak links? Or is there, is there some kind of, is there some gray area there? I mean, I, I can't move these things around and I can't put 30 of them in an end line. Is, is, I mean, is that, if, if the EPOs come out and check us and, and we're reefed up and there's only one weak link because there's a reef in the gear, I mean, is that acceptable?
Yeah, so the question is, yet the answer to your question is yes. And I'm also going to recognize Erin Bark, who's on the phone. She can talk a little bit more about the specifics of how many weak links are going to be necessary. It's going to be relative to where you, where you're fishing. Erin, can you, can you unmute yourself?
Hi. So, you know, as we've mentioned before, we're not sure what's going to be in the federal rule, but what we proposed through the, when, when the feds were working with the states to put proposals into this new rule, from the coast to three miles, it's one week contrivance at 50% down the buoy line. From three miles to 12 miles, it's two week contrivances, one in the top 25% of the line and one at 50% down. When you're 12 miles out to the LMA three border, it's one week contrivance in the top 35% down. So there's net, I mean, there's never been discussion about a, a weak point at the, at the bottom of the buoy line, you know, for safety reasons.
Steve, do you have a follow-up question?
No, no, I, I, so, so it's, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow us. So according to that, there's only, there's only one weak link. Is that right? And then as we put add-ons on, each add-on would have to have its own weak link, basically?
I mean, it depends on how far from shore you're fishing, you know, obviously.
Well, I, I go from 12 feet to over 600 feet. So you know what I mean? As we move out through the, through the months, so it's.
Right, well, depending, you know, based on what we proposed through the take reduction rules, you know, depending on your distance from shore, the number of contrivances and their location in the buoy line would change.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
You, Steve?
OS, I'm coming back to you. You're on mute, you can unmute yourself.
You hear me?
I can.
Yeah, Garrett Lapardo. How do you guys come up with the 29 feet?
Is that the vessel length for the single trap rule?
Yes. I just don't understand that one bit.
So it, so the cutoff relative to the, the vessel length is we were trying to find a size of a vessel of which we felt that vessels above that size could safely deploy doubles.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's arbitrary because I'm sure there are some fishermen who are on smaller vessels who have then 29 feet, who would feel comfortable fishing doubles. But by and large, we look at, you know, most of our vessels that fish singles right now, it's usually much smaller vessels. We only have a handful of vessels who fish larger vessel, who fish singles.
Well, I, I fish Outer Cape. You guys are very familiar with that. We're historically a single trap fishery. And we're pretty much compromised. 30 to 35 foot boats, there's a couple bigger boats, but we all fish single traps. I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot of guys that if they have to put more than one trap on a buoy are just going to be right out of business. Like I, that picture of the guy in the skiff in your slideshow, that's me. I mean, I just built my business up. I got the hell out of that death trap. I got a 33 footer now. My business is totally solely built to fish single traps.
Well, that's a comment you want to make to us when we get to that part of the, of the hearing.
A lot of people too.
Okay.
Well, Dan, this is the last comment, so if we want to transition to LS and he can.
Go ahead, Garrett.
Provide his comments and the rest of the folks in the audience can raise their hands, we can go that way.
Okay, go ahead, Garrett.
I mean, that's, that's really all I wanted to touch on was the 29 feet.
Is Garrett, is there a vessel size that, that we should, that we could consider?
It, it should, it shouldn't really matter. I mean, it, it should not matter one bit whether you're hauling single traps out of a, a 23 footer out of a 43 footer, it shouldn't matter. I mean, no questions asked, the smaller the boat, the more dangerous it is. I went swimming this summer myself, it's not fun. I mean, 29 feet, I'm speaking for like, everybody out of Nauset Inlet right now, and that's unacceptable. Like half the Outer Cape lobstermen or more I'm speaking for.
And is there a feature to the Outer Cape fishery that, that is different than what's over on the other side of the Cape and the bay? Is there, is there something about?
Yeah, our bottom. Yeah, we got a lot of good bottom and we get all, we get very congested. And you, we, we can't jam. I mean, there's some guys that fish trawels and it's like, everybody trawels up and you put one guy, a little guy in there with some singles, the, the one little guy, he's going to get put out of business because he's going to get butchered. I mean, any, anytime the singles intermingle with the trawels, you get caught up, it's just how it is. And, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to dictate how somebody has to fish their gear or how they set their gear out of the size vessel that they're, they're in. I'm speaking from two generations now. My father, Lenny, I grew, I grew up fishing Outer Cape. My brother Jeremy. I mean, trawels weren't even a thing until Richie, Richie Chase started fishing them. And there's only like two guys in the Outer Cape, Richie and Glenn Senningson, that even Glenn fishes some singles. I mean, that's it. Everybody else is single traps. It's a very big deal for us.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd ask you to also, you know, put it in writing as well.
I will.
That'd be helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Garrett.
Kaylee?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, Kaylee.
Hi, so first I just want to take a second to state my respect for and admiration of our New England fishermen and lobstermen, as these are some of the most hardworking people in the seafood industry. What I'm hoping to see in future regulations is to implement a pathway for ropeless fishing in the state. I want to stress that the implementation of ropeless fishing gear regulations does not have to come at a huge cost to these fishermen and that creating a funding program for the gear would help relieve a huge burden. In many ways, using fishing gear may even be able to replace fishing zone closures and the efforts to protect the right whale. And with the widespread use of ropeless gear, fishermen wouldn't have to worry about losing days or even weeks worth of their income to zone closures. And the North Atlantic right whale population would be allowed a chance to prosper without the threat of deadly entanglements.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Madison, Madison Lynch, you can unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, thank you. So my name is Maddie, I'm a student at Emerson College and I grew up in the coastal town of Dartmouth here in Mass. But even though I grew close to the water, I had never heard of North Atlantic right whales until about a year and a half ago. But I researched that for a period of time. I've really come to care about this issue. But unfortunately during that same time, which was only about a year, as I said, um, the population has declined to only 366 whales. And now I feel like every time I look at the news, majority of the stories describe yet another right rail, right whale tragedy. Entanglements are the leading cause of right whale deaths and also limit the whale's ability to reproduce. For the whales that are able to reproduce, their calves are essentially set up for failure. For a species on the brink of extinction, this is unacceptable. Right now, we've seen two new right whale calves and so I hope that we can give these calves a chance of survival. I've also heard about ropeless fishing gear and its effectiveness in preventing whales from getting trapped in buoy lines. When speaking to friends and family about ropeless gear, which has been studied by NOAA for over 20 years, their first question is always the same. If entanglements are so lethal, why aren't we using ropeless fishing gear? I can honestly not provide them with a valid answer because ropeless gear should be included. And if we're really going to give these whales a, a fair shot at survival, ropeless gear needs to be considered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madison. Marco Flag. Marco, you're up.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'm Marco Flag. Some of you may know me, I'm the CEO of Desert Star Systems. So we are a ropeless equipment manufacturer. And my comment was, is that I understand, you know, you made it clear that the reason that ropeless isn't on the agenda yet is because of the perceived difficulty of letting other fishers know where your gear, so gear overlay. I would recommend for one part, looking at the test report of the Cold Water Lobster Association up there in Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, where they did competitive, competitive fishing trial with several fishing boats, laying multiple trawels, quarter mile between trawels typically over a period of three days. I don't have the exact number on top of my head, but I think it was something on the order of 36, you know, trow deployments and recoveries and not a single overlay. And it is coordinated through a virtual gear marking app and there are several of those around now, kind of like GPS gear marking. It's worth pointing out that fishers commented one in particular that I was on the boat with, but also the group overall, at the sense that if everybody was fishing that way, they would prefer it, that is virtual gear marking over buoy spotting, simply because you can have a view of the whole gear field and in particular an inclement weather and it was pretty rough those weeks in, that week in October or so. You know, you just can see your marks, your virtual marks more reliable than a buoy that you might miss out there. So that has been the experience with it. Of course, we, in our everyday life, realize it or not, we are using virtual gear marking all the time when you're looking, you know, your car GPS and you're going like, oh, there's an accident ahead. That's a virtual gear mark. We do use those things. And I think the value to fishers, to having this option available is very substantial. And my sense is from having observed this over a number of years, that, that fishers in a local area, say fishing out of a port will pretty soon come to standardize on whatever sort of method of, of virtual gear marking they use, so they know where each other's gear is located.
Yeah, sir, sir, if I could, if I could just interrupt, because we can't, because we're not proposing specific rules on that, I think your comments are probably best for, for another session when we can talk about this in detail. So if you have specific comments on our proposals, I think we'd really like to hear from you or if you're done, we can, we. we can take that up with some of us, uh, in more of a private setting or, or in another forum.
Yeah, that was really my comment. So overall, I would really encourage you to give fishers that option of ropeless fishing and thereby fishing in these closed uh, zones, you know, make it a vertical rope closure, not a, a
Yeah, so, so you're suggesting that if we close the, the, the rest of those waters to allow ropeless to, um, to take place in there? That's
Exactly.
That's your point. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Marco. All right, I'm seeing one more comment from Garrett before we go back to Garrett. I was wondering if anyone else had a comment. Otherwise, we'll go back. All right, Steve, you're up.
So I, I'd like to point out a fact here that I keep hearing all this talk about, about ropeless fishing and ropeless fishing and, and from day one, when this was brought up, we were told that it's, it's been a huge success in Australia. Well, it's twenty-twenty and through social media, you can reach anybody you want in the world. So I took it upon myself to reach out to the commercial fishing fleet in Australia. Now I was getting up in the middle of the night to talk to these guys because they're on the other side of the world and I asked them how it worked and if it worked. They told me flat out that it does not work. They had more lost gear, more marine debris, and more issues, more money spent trying to fish ropeless gear. Now, every trawl that I fish costs me three thousand dollars. And you know, and when we lose it to draggers, to anything else, we do, we do everything in our power. We make every effort to get this gear back. This guy's talking about fishing, setting gear a quarter of a mile apart. The fact of the matter is, is that when we're all piled up on an edge or we're all piled up someplace because that's where the body of lobsters are, sometimes we're fishing within a hundred feet of each other.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's not feasible when you put all these variables like tide, wind, you know, wave action, the tide can be going north and south on the surface, but it could be going east and west on the bottom. It's, it's completely unreasonable. And then we get into the whole mobile gear problem, which, you know, Jared can attest to that because you guys are dealing with the state water draggers and the state water lobster boats and when they can see the gear, it's nothing but an issue.
Yeah.
How much, how much marine debris are we gonna, are we gonna?
Those are really good questions and, and I, for the, for the folks who are still listening in, uh, we have received a, um, a substantial grant, um, I guess it's around two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're hiring a consultant to look at these questions and there's going to be, uh, you know, scores of interviews. And Steve Bedrow, I will make sure that you are among those who will be interviewed as, as, uh, as the other gentleman who's involved with the, with the equipment. So I'd prefer not to, I mean, I, it, it's, it's juicy conversation and it's fascinating to me, but for the purposes of this hearing, I think we should just focus on these proposals, but there will be other opportunities. I, I promise you to you, to have your voices heard and to really, um, uh, examine what the, what the, uh, the realities are of this gear and, and what it would take to make it work. So if you don't mind, um, I, I just want to cut off that, what appears to be a debate. Um, but I promise you that, um, DMF is going to be working to sort of, uh, bring, expose these issues and try to resolve these issues.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve. Kim Sawicki, you're up. Kim, you can unmute.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
I can, Kim.
Hi, sorry, uh, so I just had, I know that we're in question, uh, questions, comments area. We've, I've heard a lot of both tonight. Um, I have a few questions. I just wanted to know if, if you have an idea of what percentage of fishers in mass are going to be affected by your proposed changes? So like recreational versus commercial? Do you, do you know this yet?
I, I, well, um, we have about eight hundred active lobster men fishing in state waters and we have about a few thousand, um, recreational potters. Is that your question?
Yeah, I want, I, I, I really wanted to know what percentage of those eight hundred active commercial fishers versus the few thousand recreational fishers would be affected by the, the proposed rule changes?
Yeah.
I just want to know how that, those changes will be applied to both sectors. Do you, do you have those figures or? Is that something you could provide?
We don't have them handy, but I'll make sure that in our final recommendation, we do, uh, try to, uh, develop that. Um, but again, uh, the federal permit holders who are, who have the opportunity to move into the E E Z wouldn't be affected by this state waters closure. So it's, it's and not every fisherman already fishes during that time period of February through April since the weather's lousy, catches tend to be low and gear losses tend to be high because of storms.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. Yeah, no, that makes sense. Um, and so, uh, I, I'm just wondering, do we, do we know with these changes? Um, is there, and I, I know David Abel touched on it a little bit, some other people did as well. Is there any type of economic, uh, like assessment that's been done on how this will affect mass fishers? Um, like commercially, I, I definitely wreck fishers are important as well, but I'm just wondering about the guys that have families to feed. Is this going to affect a, a large number of them? Um, obviously some of them have already come up with fishing adjuncts such as the South Shore Sleeve and other, uh, ways to sort of be able to keep fishing when there are whales present. So what, what are your ideas about that?
Well, the, um, when the whales are present in Cape Cod Bay, um, there is no fish, there's no fixed gear fishing that's allowed, um, at all, even, even with the sleeve, uh, the gear is prohibited. So, um, the, what, the fate of, of those fishermen, um, unable to fish in, in Cape Cod Bay during those three months uh, is going to be, uh, extended to the rest of state waters. Our, our data show that most of the, there's very little fishing that goes on in February, um, a little bit in, in March and in April, it does, it historically it does tend to, to ramp up. We certainly will have that when we go to our commission, uh, you know, with a final recommendation. We'll have some estimate of, 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 of the likely impacts.
Okay, thanks. Um, that mostly was really just sort of it, my, my concerns are, you know, we've, we've been dealing with an ocean that is, it is not static, right? So things are changing all the time. I just want to make sure we're not getting ourselves into a situation that might change in the future and then we've got people locked into something. Um, and, and with that being said, uh, what is there like a next step? If this, you know, the plan that's proposed, you know, say the seventeen hundred pound breaking strength rope and the closures and the South Shore sleeves don't work and God forbid, we have an I T P in place and we get a whale that shows up with mass gear on it someplace, a right whale, like what, what happens then? That's, that's a big concern for me because mass fishermen have already done so much to try to mitigate any risk to these animals. Like if this is our hail Mary, what happens next? What's the next step?
That's a good question. I mean, this is a, a, a national plan. Um, the take reduction plan is, is, um, is promulgated by all the states and the federal government. And, um, we'll see. I mean, we've had two entanglements in eleven years, one in ten years. And, uh, you know, it is something that, that we all are concerned about on a regular basis and, and I know all the lobster men are as well. So, um, I don't, I don't, I don't have a stock answer of, of what happens if we have an entanglement of Massachusetts gear with, with a right whale. We're, we're certainly working to prevent that.
No, for sure. And I, I think you've all done amazing work toward that goal. I'm just worried about what happens if, if we can't prevent that going forward. Is there, you know, it would be great to know that we have sort of a backup plan and I think it's been talked about a bit tonight, but we've got a lot of fishermen that have even spoken towards other options. Um, so hopefully, and I know that mass has set aside funding for alternative gear exploration, so hopefully we can keep moving forward with that.
Thanks, Kim. Jared, next.
C L A.
Hi, do you hear me?
I can, yes.
Hi, yes. Uh, so my question, comment, um, is with regards to the state water closures. And my question is, I know that you, a few people have, um, asked about the economic impacts and, um, of this closure and you did mention that some, you know, there's, uh, less fishing during the months of February through April. However, I wanted to know if there's been consideration given to the fact that, you know, fishermen have up to eight hundred traps, you know, out in the water, um, during the year to fish and due to the weather, especially during this time of year, it can take months even to get that all out of the water. So that's taking off two other months of like fishing, um, time and, uh, of making money as well. And the same thing goes the other way, which, you know, a lot of fishermen start take, putting their gear out in March and April and that won't be possible. So they'll start fishing later as well. And I just wanted to make sure this is being considered.
Yeah, it, it, we are aware of that and, and that is one of the painful aspects of, of not only this proposal, but the rules that we enacted, um, five and six years ago when we closed Cape Cod Bay. Um, because we know it did affect fishermen's ability and also created a bottleneck at the pier when everybody wanted to, you know, set the gear at the, on the opening day. So we, we certainly understand those challenges as well. Um, you know, the, uh, so anyway, I'll, I'll stop there, but, uh, we are aware of that.
Okay.
Brad, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, I have a quick question. Um, so right now we mock our end lines with the, you know, the red tape or whatever you want to use as red. So are these new, um, these new breakaway points, are they going to be color coded red or what's going on with that?
I'll, I'll take a stab at this.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, so one of the things, state of Massachusetts is probably going to be going to
Yeah, he's dropped out again.
Yeah, I didn't. Well, we, I, I mean, are we getting rid of all the red, you know, totally or what's going on with that? I mean?
Some fishermen may choose to fish rope that is entirely seventeen hundred pounds. They would have to intertwine their orange marks throughout there. Uh, or if you have used the sleeves, the orange sleeve would suffice as that marking as well if it was colored.
All right. So we're get, we're going to be getting rid of red altogether then.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Bob, are we also getting rid of the, the breakaway below the buoy? I think we are, right?
We are not.
Okay.
That is not proposed in the federal regs.
Okay, thanks.
So then do you actually have on that comment to the, the break, the breakaway on the buoy? So I, that'd be seventeen hundred plus another six, right? That's twenty-three hundred pounds.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it has to, the buoy, you know, the breakaway buoy swivel or the dog bone or whatever you use or, uh, for the, for this, that attaches to the buoy is different than the seventeen hundred pound line or contrivance in the buoy line itself. Um, that's in addition to that. It's not additive.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
With a couple more, Dan, just bear with me as I go through it.
Sure.
Megan O. Megan, you there? Megan, I'm going to come back to you. Eric, you're up.
Uh, I'm, if I heard correctly, Bob was cutting in, but we're switching from red to orange and I believe I heard the other day that the Canadian crab fishery is orange. So I guess my comment is like, why are we losing the red to go to orange when there's a, a serious entanglement risks to people that already have orange markings on their line?
Hey, Bob, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. So a couple of things, uh, first is we, we took orange based on what was initially suggested by Mass Lobstern's Association. Um, we, that color isn't finalized. We can go to another color. And as Beth Cassoni mentioned earlier, she did bring that up and, um, I'm not that concerned about it because the Canadian snow crab gear is consist of really large diameter line and in mass, we're going to be con- constrained to using only three eighths line. But again, we, you know, if another color makes more sense, um, we can, we can certainly add that in. That's not, uh, the color is not completely chosen yet at this point.
I'm really fond of red. I like the red.
Yeah, the problem with the red is that that's been used for all lobster gear. And what you don't want to have is, is a situation whereby any thing that comes up with a piece of red on it is automatically attributable to Massachusetts. You can remember there's over a million buoy lines that were fished last year that all have a red mark or, or so. Uh, based on, you know, Maine, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, all have to have red on their lobster. So I'm a little worried about taking on red. I think the risk of us getting misidentified with red is higher than orange and Canadian snow crab gear.
That's true, but now I'm going to have to take all the reds off.
And I, I just want to clarify for, for those in attendance that this gear marking discussion about the colors is not part of this proposal. It's part of a, uh, federal rule that has yet to be published and we will have to come back out to public hearing to adopt whatever comes out of that.
Okay, I'm done. I think I'm done with the comments on the colors. I'm good.
Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Chuck Gilchrist.
Hi, um, I'm the overbraid guy again. Uh, I just wanted to mention that it was, it was brought up that the sleeves that we're currently making are orange in color, but they also have red flecks on them. So, uh, I don't know how that would equate to what you guys may or may not be uh, looking to achieve with regards to gear marking, but that is certainly something. I will, um, say that, uh, and, and it is something to take, uh, take into consideration. The amount of different colors that are available in the yarns that the sleeves are made of are not infinite. So we would ask that if you're going to be proposing color markings, which I know are not part of this whole arrangement, that you consult with the manufacturers before you start saying, well, we need purple and turquoise and pused and, and mauve and everything else such as that, because you have to consider what the, uh, what the suppliers are actually going to be able to produce. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chuck. Rob Martin.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
I can, Rob.
Yeah, just a quick question. Solid orange for southern nearshore trap haul waters, mid-Atlantic areas four, five and six. So just be aware of that. And in the South Shore Sleeve, which it's already orange, the older sleeves have a red and white tracer in them already. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Rob. Garrett, we're back to you.
Just a quick thing on the, on like ropeless. Those two girls in the beginning made me want to say this, so the whole state goes ropeless.
Yeah, Garrett, we're, we're really not going to propose that tonight. Um, I, we took the comment from someone who said if you're going to close the areas, allow ropeless, but I don't want to get into a, a debate, but But I don't want to get into a debate, but I will be happy to put you on the list of people who are going to be interviewed on what challenges ropeless brings. I promise you that. Your your voice will be heard through that grant where we're going to conduct all those interviews.
One, one more, one more thing. How long have we been marking our gear now for with the the yellow for our, for a single trap? Like six years, right?
About that, yeah.
Has any single trap ever been pulled off a whale?
Off of humpback whales.
Yeah, not right whales, though.
I'm pretty sure off that humpback, it was a trawl, though.
You know what? We will get, if you want, we'll look into that and get back to you.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Dan, I have one last comment coming from Kim Sewicki.
Yeah, let's make this the last comment. And what we can do is, there'll be another hearing tomorrow night, but go ahead, Jared, what'd you say?
Be before that, Megan O, who had her hand raised earlier, has raised her hand again. So we can recognize her after Kim and then call the hearing.
Sounds good. Thanks. Go ahead, Kim.
Hopefully you can hear me. I just wanted to say one thing in relation to ropeless. I do think that, as a comment, I do think it should be coming up at some point in the plan for Mass because there are fishers that that really do want it. They've been working really hard for it. They need it. We've got other fisheries in the U S that are actively pursuing it as an opportunity. And I do think it's something that should be subsidized for those fishers that can't fish because of closures. I'm not speaking specifically even to this particular proposed rule as it it is in existence, but the fact that it could set a standard for the rest of Massachusetts, I think that there is a place for it in certain areas. Not all. But I do think that fishers like Garrett and others, Mike, Rob, there have been a number of them that have spoken this evening. They have had very pertinent questions that researchers like myself would really like to answer. And I think that any opportunity for these groups to get together to work on this as an alternative measure to allow guys to should should be encouraged and and become a part of these rules or proposed rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Megan O. Megan? Sorry, Megan, I'm not, your audio does not seem to be working this evening. You could submit a comment in writing or try to attend again tomorrow. Dan, back to you then.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. We had some pretty amazing attendance tonight. Over two, up to 200 people were listening into this call at its peak. So I really appreciate a lot of the comments and a lot of the engagement that we had tonight. There will be another hearing tomorrow night. Hopefully, I can stay on script and present the information exactly the same way. But the, the record will remain open through a week from Friday. It is always best to put your thoughts in writing. Otherwise, one of us is going to have to interpret or or or, you know, capture your thoughts and other descriptions of the comment. It's always best to come directly from from you all. So thanks for attending tonight. Thanks for for the support. And I know this is a difficult issue for all of us. We all want to save the right whale. And and I really appreciate everybody's efforts tonight in this important hearing. So having said that, this hearing is adjourned, and it'll be posted on our YouTube channel by tomorrow morning. So thanks a lot.